I'd like to call to order Smyrna Planning Commission for August 2019. At this time, we'd ask everyone to stand for prayer and pledge, please.
Trey.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this, another opportunity to meet, to discuss our town's business. We ask that you be with us and guide us. We ask that you watch over our firemen and our policemen, watch over those who serve us overseas, and protect our country. Watch over us all, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Flight.
Let it allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No citizens' comments at this time?
That's correct.
All right. Moving on to item number four, approval of the minutes of our July meeting. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were passed out?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. We'll have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, old business, site plan Marriott Hotel, staff comments.
This is a site plan for the Marriott Hotel that was deferred from last month's meeting, located at 411 Potomac Place. This is going to be located at the intersection of Cheney Road and Potomac Place, at the new extension of Potomac. Proposed building is to be 65,342 square feet in size. Property is zone C2, and the proposed use is for a hotel. Property is bound to the north by condominium complex, to the east by vacant portion of the same parcel, to the south by the extension of Potomac Place, and to the west by Cheney Road. Surrounding zoning consists of R6 and C2. As proposed, the site may be accessed from Potomac Place. The proposed building is to be five stories and 54 feet high, which will require a height overlay to be approved by Town Council, which is on your agenda for later in this evening. There were a couple of questions that we had from last month's meeting regarding the elevation materials and event space inside the hotel, and the applicant has said that they will address those comments at the meeting tonight. Same comments from last month's meeting regarding the height overlay to be addressed. Two, for the street tree spacing requirement will not be met by design review due to the Enbridge utility gas easement on this property. Event space, as I mentioned, as well will be addressed, as well as the elevations for brick as the exterior material, consistent with other hotels in the site in this area. Five, the plot should be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits. And then, we have in our staff comment regarding the extension of a sidewalk to Heath Place. As the site plan shows, the sidewalk ends before it reaches Heath Place on the northern side of the property along Cheney. As well, coming over five way on extension to that as well, to provide property on the south side of the gas easement to Town of Smyrna for a right-of-way for the future extension of Cheney on that side of the road. Other than that, staff would recommend approval.
All right. So, as far as the questions we had last month, do we have someone here that's prepared to address those?
Yes.
Could you please come forward, give your name and address, please, sir?
I'm Chris McCarthy. I represent the developer and the management company as well. Which one would you like to address first?
Go ahead and, uh, do you have meeting rooms?
We do. We have meeting space of around 1,200 square feet, should have an occupancy of around 78 people. We don't have that number nailed down yet, but that's based on our past experience.
Trey, I think that was your question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have adequate parking accommodated in their parking lot to accommodate the guest, as well as the potential for the meeting space.
So, for our management company, we never take meeting space without guest rooms. So, if someone wanted to rent our meeting space and didn't want to rent nine, 12, or 15 rooms, we would not be interested, because we, our meeting space is really not a profit center for us. It's more to help us sell rooms. We also would only sell our meeting space during the day. We would not want to disrupt our guests from the sleeping in the evening time. So, that's pretty well what those would be.
Based on our standards, as far as our parking situation, okay, Kevin?
Yeah, they're meeting, our requirement is one space per room for rent, so we don't have any requirements for additional parking for event space or anything like that.
One per room, do we add anything for employees or anything like that, just one per room?
One per room is all we require.
Okay. And how many rooms do you have in this facility?
It says 102 is required. I'm assuming that's based on a room count, or is that based on square footage?
That would be based on the room count. The other thing we have learned in parking is, most people, especially if we're close to airports or event centers, they will come in two or three in a vehicle. They may rent three rooms, but they may only have one vehicle to park with. Parking in the evening as well, we typically only have two employees there, so employees never take very much parking space at all. A lot of our hotels, we have one-to-one, we rarely ever run into parking space issues. If it was, we would not want to have that issue ourself either, for our paying customers to deal with that.
Is the brand going to be Courtyard, or you're not sure right now?
No, we are 100% sure. That's what we're striving for, yes, is a courtyard by Marriott.
And Courtyard has kind of elevated their food and beverage program, meaning they're going after not only the guests, but outside, the locals as well. So, that's something to think about.
Yes. They have a bistro for that, and also they have a small Starbucks center in there. Unfortunately, we have seven of these, and we have not seen the outside emergence as what Marriott would like for it to be. For us, it's more of a, for the guest, and we, I mean, it's a break-even deal for us, really. We lose on it a lot, but their new F and B is not much different than what it was in the past.
Other questions on this issue? All right, let's move along to the exterior and the requests there concerning the percent of EFS involved in architectural.
We sent you guys a new sheet that had the percentages on it. The original that we had sent to you guys, we were at 47% EFS, 31% Nietzsche hop handle or a fiber cement product, 21% doors, windows, and architectural grills, and 1% metal. So, as you can see from the design, though, Marriott has changed their design on the Courtyard. There's a great deal of detail of insets and offsets and lighting, and, I mean, they spent a lot of money, I believe, to come up with this design that's going to go across all of North America. So, they're proud of it, we would be proud of it as well, but that's where the percentages are at.
Chairman, I can kind of speak to this a little bit.
Please do.
I actually, I had a meeting after the last planning commission with Jared Bell and some of the people from Marriott, and discussed some of those exact concerns about how much was EFS actually and what wasn't. And I think what we began to realize is that a lot of this glass front was kind of being counted in and so forth. So, I think when you really look at this, it's not quite the EFS amount that we, when we look at a drawing, we get a different concept of. The other things I asked them to do, if they could, was to do something with the top brow and some of those things. I see it on this drawing now, and the last time, it wasn't on here, so it sounds like they've taken.
We did. We added, basically, 2% was the number that it came to. We added some Nietzsche hop handle to the top of the, it would be the right brow that's on the top of it. Just a very modest amount. I mean, imaging and branding is very important to Marriott, as we all are aware, so those guys are reluctant to give very much on their designs on it, but that's what we're here for today, so.
And if I understood Mr. Bell right, this is what you call your Generation Six series, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And so, this is kind of their new platform, their new model. I appreciate the fact that they took the time to come in and listen, and I also appreciate the fact that they took some of the ideas that we put on them. As a big corporation, they listened a little bit, and so, I feel better about it now than I would have a month ago, so when you all deferred that, those are some of the things I wanted to process. I don't know about the rest of them, but I appreciate them coming in, taking the time, and sitting down, discussing it all with us, and making some changes.
We appreciate the opportunity. I mean, we feel like it's an awesome-looking structure, and certainly hope we can get to build it here.
There's a lot of shadow lighting, too, in here, isn't there?
There is a great deal of lighting on it, yes. Yeah, the ins and outs don't, I mean, the rendering show is some, but it's still not exactly what you're going to see when it comes up in person, but, yeah, it's a much more expensive building for us to build than what their old style was with all of the accent lighting and the offsets and the ins and outs of it.
Kevin, is the fire department okay with the 54-feet height?
Yeah, they haven't indicated to me anything, any issues.
The good thing, you know, is Marriott, they're very specific on their life safety, so probably one of the most adept or challenging companies out there.
We just have to make sure our equipment can reach that height it can, but that's why. That's the reason for the question. We want to make sure, from our perspective, that if there's a fire on that upper floor, top floor, whatever, we can access it, so.
We want the protection as well, so, yes.
So, I make question three under staff comments. Has been addressed, would you agree, Kevin?
Yes.
Question four, the materials were more clarified, are you comfortable with those?
Yeah, after meeting with them, we talked over this. Detail line item by line item, I feel a lot better about it than not. I had some questions, and I don't think we really knew the answers last week, or last month, so.
So, can we scratch staff comment four, then?
In my opinion, you can, and the rest of the planning commission may have an opinion, but that's mine.
Other questions? Will somebody make a motion? We'll find out here pretty quick.
Well, if you're looking for a motion, there's no more questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
And base?
Based with staff comments, by the way.
Of one, two, and five?
Correct.
All right, we have a motion and a second. You all have any other questions concerning these two items or anything else? Okay, motion and a second, we'll call for a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. While the gentleman is here, why don't we go ahead and move on to 6B, which is the height overlay for this project here? And since we just got through approving the site plan, do we have any questions, any other questions concerning the height overlay? Can I have a motion on it?
How do we approve?
And, do we approve it, or does that go to council?
It's a recommendation to council, yeah.
So, we are recommending the height overlay positively to council. Is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on to number six, new business rezoning request. Number one has been withdrawn. Moving on to number two, 1021 Sergeant Asbury-Hawn Way at Best Smyrna LLC. Staff comments?
This is a rezoning request. The property is currently zone C2. The proposed zoning is a PCD. Land use plan would support commercial development here, and there's adequate fire flow. The proposed PCD is for an automotive repair facility. It's a Firestone Complete Auto Care. We do have their proposed plans and the layout. It is over 6,000 square feet is the size of the building. The architecture, toward the back of the sheets, is almost an entirely brick and stone building. That certainly meets our design requirements in regards to that. Would be, it has, would be access from Asbury-Hawn Way, does front Nissan drive, but it would only be access from Asbury-Hawn Way, which is a part of the overall sprint of comments We did have a comment regarding, there is an area they're going to have outdoor storage of tires that are being, have been, are being, gotten rid of, and so, we did recommend, and they do show a roof over that area. It would be basically right next to their dumpster enclosure, and so, they will be putting a roof over that, so water, any rainwater from standing inside those tires, so.
So, are you satisfied with what's been presented there?
Yes, we can remove number five, our comments.
So, we're scratching five?
Yes.
Questions?
Kevin, is all the equipment on top hidden, parapet wall?
Yes.
No issues with design review, which I will are aware of?
That's correct.
And it does not look at any of the bay doors or whatnot actually face either Nissan or Asbury, is that correct?
Right, they're faced to the north, basically, yeah.
Okay, so, I know we worked on that with another operation. We wanted to make sure that that was maintained, and it looks like it is on this.
So, you feel like it's consistent, this is consistent with what we have requested before?
Yes.
It's kind of nice to get designer view in here, that you don't have to ask questions about any of this, stone and brick, and it's a good-looking building.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion to recommend, give a positive recommendation to council. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under new business rezoning, item number three, Robert Latimer, South Side, staff comments.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. This is a piece of property that's been before you a couple of times in the past. This is currently zone C2. They want to request it to, and with the Lowry Street overlay, and they're wanting to rezone it to a PRD within the Lowry Street overlay. About 1.45 acres. Surrounding zoning is a mix of the PRD, which is also the joint development, actually also South Side Town Home Development, C2 and then C3 on, across the street. Land use plan would support commercial development here. Again, there is adequate fire flow. The proposed PRD is for 25 townhouse units. We had a few comments regarding street naming, and then regarding water service, which main they needed to use. Again, it is for 25 townhouse units. It is, as a part of the Lowry Street overlay, there's a couple of things in that overlay that had some recommendations, and they've met a lot of those with regards to the design of the proposed structures along Lowry Street. They are facing Lowry Street, and they would be accessed from the rear. The buildings that would be fronting Lowry Street would be with garages on the bottom floor, and things of that nature, so they have met a lot of the items required under the Lowry Street overlay. The one thing they have, and this is really not in the overlay, this is more of what our ordinance requires as far as amenities. They are requesting approval to do a dog park in lieu of a playground area that is required by the zoning ordinance. And then, the request of density is about, is 17.24 units per acre, which is, it's recommended, it's not required as a part of the Lowry Street overlay, but it is recommended for this area that, in the overlay, that any standalone multifamily development cannot exceed 12 units per acre. So, the units, at 12 units per acre, that would be 17 units, so it's about eight units over what is recommended through the overlay. It is a small tract of land, it's only an acre and a half, and so, it's pretty easy to get over that density without a lot of units necessarily, but they have requested approval of it, obviously with that.
How many buildings? Is it one?
It's, well, it's four buildings, 25 units in four buildings.
Okay.
Yes.
What has been approved was something similar with retail on the first floor and residential above?
That was approved originally.
How many units were involved in that when we?
I don't recall exactly how many units were involved in it. It was kind of the first floor retail, and then above, the second and third floor. I don't think it was this many, but I don't recall exactly how many it was.
Is the applicant here? Please give your name and address.
My name's Brian Grover. I work with SEC, and I'm here to represent Robert Latimer.
Do you remember when we approved this before, how many residential units were involved in essentially what is, I guess it's still approved, didn't it, Kevin?
Actually, no. They actually came back and rezoned it back to C2.
Okay.
And that's why it is currently zone C2.
All right, thank you.
So, it's not actually still in effect, and that was approved before the overlay was adopted as well.
Yes. Well, I think I got the answer to my question. Do we have questions, while he's up here? Parking, adequate parking with this?
I mean, they are meeting the requirements of two per unit, yes. I think they're a little, maybe one or two spaces over.
There's 48 exterior parking spaces, and then, the townhomes in the front face and direct at Lowry, they have a single indoor parking garage or parking space inside.
Yeah. And they have two per unit on those fronts with the garage, they have two per unit in addition to the garage.
Is there a dedicated guest parking?
There is an overabundance of parking on-site, but that is something we can most certainly do, is set aside a specific area towards guest parking.
Yeah, they're showing 50 surface spaces, which is two per unit, and then they have the garages in addition to that.
So, they're actually, so, now, okay.
Yeah.
One of the parking spaces goes into the garage.
Does that count as two, or is it as three?
It counts as two.
Yeah, there's 50, basically, surface parking, and then you have the units with the garages as well, so.
So, it's 15 surplus parking spaces total?
Yeah, there's 15, because there's 15 units on those front two buildings. So, there are total 65 spaces if you count the garages.
Kevin, is this consistent with what we've looked at and what we've approved as far as parking and amenities and?
Well, the amenity part of it, we have, certainly, we've had folks that have built and done dog parks, but it's always been in addition to, you know, the playground space or something like that, as far as amenities. The density is a little higher than what we typically have had, for sure.
And I seem to recall on a couple of other projects, we made sure that we had adequate parking for guests, so that folks weren't in either a roadway or an alleyway.
Right.
So, clarify, they have two parking, two outside spaces, and a garage space?
For the two buildings on the front. The buildings in the rear would not have garages.
Okay.
Yeah. So, there's two spaces per unit, parking is provided, and then they have the 15, 15 of the units will have garages, and that's one car garage per unit.
And those garage units are not blocked by any of those two parking spaces per unit, which we've got?
Yes, they are.
No, they would be blocked by them, yeah, they would be blocked.
But, they still have two.
They would still have two, yeah.
But for a guest, if you had a car garage, it would count, but they have the two, which we've worked through.
Kevin, did you say that they're already over their limit with the overlay as far as apartments here?
It's recommended in the overlay of 12-unit per acre density for multifamily, yeah.
So, they're over, what, eight?
By eight, by eight units total, yes, sir.
This actually exceeds an R6.
It would be greater than that. R6 would have, yeah, 21 units if it were zone R6.
The reason for the high density is through the concepts and previous versions we've gone through, is the amount of earthwork required for that site to get it to actually work, the amount of units. To evenly distribute that cost had to be higher.
And I just want to make sure I'm understanding these front units. When it's saying three stories, is the first level a garage and kind of unfinished area, then you've got two living, two living stories above that?
First, it would be the garage, it would have a foyer, it would have a foyer, and it would go up from there to the second and third stories.
I mean, those that front the Lowry Street will have a front door going out towards Lowry Street.
The buildings themselves still address Lowry Street.
And so, will the back units have two stories?
The back units would be two stories, yes, ma'am.
Have we had anything come before us before? Since we've had the overlay concerning townhomes density, this is kind of the first one.
This is really the first one since we've had the overlay, yeah.
And essentially, I think we're having a second one come.
Later on.
A little later on.
Right.
Where we will have a similar issue, correct?
Well, I mean, as far as the, yeah, there's, certainly, parking is a part of their discussion on that one.
Well, I was talking about density as much as anything.
Yeah, it's a little bit more, it's more than what we would allow in R6, oh, yes, yeah.
Or recommended in the?
Right, in the overlay as well, yeah. Well, that one is in the downtown area, so maybe.
But it's still part of the Lowry Street overlay?
It's still part of the overlay, yes.
Would that recommendation not also apply to that project?
It would, but, I mean. It would, but I mean, again, it's a recommendation, not a should, it's a should, not a shall. So I think you have some flexibility because it's in the downtown area. To me, I think if you wanted to have something that was a little bit higher, that might be a place to think about it, just because it's in the downtown, whereas this is not. But yes, it is the same.
And the two footprints are decidedly different, one's on one and a half acres and one's on?
Eighteen and a half acres.
Eighteen and a half acres.
Right.
What we're talking about is the item that'll be coming up later on.
Number six, number six. This is three, it's six, yeah.
So with them putting a dog park in instead of a play area, if you've got kids living here, where are they going to play?
When there is some open space, it's unimproved, but there's no equipment of any kind or anything like that, yeah.
What's the number of units where amenity packages begin to be required?
It's 100 units. It's 100 units when we have to have the swimming pool or the?
Two recreational.
Two recreational type amenities like this. What's required, what's required here is the, a certain amount of square footage per bedroom of sitting area type areas, and a certain amount of square footage per unit of playground space. And they've got the open area and all, that's probably okay, but the playground space is really what they're asking for, the way.
So is a playground space required, recommended, or?
It, it's required, and they're asking as a part of the PUD, but you have that authority.
It's required because of the amount of square foot, footage?
Because it's, because it's a multifamily development, it's required.
All right, so it would be required whether it's four units or 25 units? That, that, that's what I'm trying to.
Right, no, I mean, it wouldn't be required if somebody just built a quad on a single lot, no. And we've only had a couple of those, and those have been in areas where there was playground space provided, so it wasn't an issue, so. When you had several quads on, there's one area in town where we've got some of that, but, but no, this, I mean, it's the 25 units.
Well, if it was 10 units instead of 25, it would still be required?
Right.
Okay.
Just be a small area.
Do you know, is there a play area in the existing townhome area that's accessible?
No.
I don't think so, and I think that was before we had that requirement, having it been there a while.
It's pretty tight back there, and it's really dense.
It is.
The, the reason for the dog park was more of the, the target kind of residence for this development, because it is more kind of upscale architecture along with it, with the amenities, the garage and everything included. Maybe kind of more of a younger generation, and with that typically comes with more pets, so on and so forth, and it's many that we've used on other projects that tends to be very successful and used quite a bit, even with these townhome projects.
The original plat we approved had some commercial on the front. I know there's some concerns about the traffic getting in and out of that development, either from Southside or from Stewart. I'm trying to remember if there was any kind of turning lanes in.
I don't think so.
I know there's not one at Southside.
Yeah, and of course, at Southside, there's no median cut there, it has to ride in, ride out only at Southside. Stewart Drive, you can turn left.
We've almost got to go up the Omni, have to turn around. Well, then, in your opinion, as far as ingress and egress out here, is this sufficient with how Lowry Street is, is currently, I guess, designed or laid out, for lack of better words, or is there something more, in your opinion, that would be needed here?
I don't know if there's anything more needed for, from an access standpoint. I mean, they're not asking to, to utilize Lowry Street as an access. I think adding another conflict point in between those two to Lowry Street would be a problem. They're not asking to do that. This is the same basic traffic flow as what was approved before.
Which involved retail?
Retail and, retail and multifamily.
Because we had that discussion before.
Right.
And essentially with 25, with the number of units, they can go in two different, they can go to either street, correct?
And they can actually go out the backside of Southside as well, if they wanted to go back through that development if they needed to.
But they can go to Southside or they can?
Or they can go to Stewart Drive, yeah.
Yes, so they can.
And this was not a large enough development to meet the threshold of where a traffic study would be required under our ordinance.
It would not be unusual for a development of this size to only have one entrance.
Potentially, yeah.
And they have two.
And they have two, right.
Design review, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Issue then, to me, it seems like comes to density and the one amenity package.
Right.
Do we know if these are owner occupant for sale, or are these rental property?
We've not discussed that just yet, but I could find out for you guys.
Well, it mentioned today, HOA and the?
Uh, yeah.
I think Mr. Latimer told me it was, it was his intent was to sell them, but?
I believe so, I, I can't really confirm that, it's not a conversation we had, but I believe his intention was for sale.
Okay, what's the issues of the commission?
If I can shed any light on this or not, but we have recently here at the planning commissioner level and then on to the council level have had product to us, townhome product brought to us that the council as a whole, I think, felt wasn't something they wanted to accept at the time, so I'm not saying this applies to that at all, but what I am saying is, we as a council are going to try to do a workshop soon on those very things. It's like, what, what is it that we're trying to mold ourselves into? And so it's been confusing, actually, for people kind of wondering that. So we're trying to get to the bottom of that. I, that said, I, I don't want to tell these people to move it forward or not, they have options here, but we might know more in a month than we know right now about that flavor, you know, so.
Well, my concern, kind of based upon where you're heading, is the issue of density versus the overlay, the amenity, and potential parking issues for non-residents here. And I know it's something that we focused on, on several of these projects. And I can't speak for the council, but just, you know, I guess I'm doubtful, is all I'll say, with those open questions.
These are things we're asking, we're wanting to look further into. You would rather defer, and we can look into that further and come back with some better answers, maybe after your workshop as well, to better guideline for what you guys are looking for.
That's up to you, not us, but.
He can, he's, if he's, if he's requesting deferral, I think that is certainly an action you all could take.
Yeah, if that's what he wants us to do, that's why I'm saying that's, that's kind of to him.
I, I think we're going to request a deferral at this time.
All right, very good. I have a motion to defer.
I'll move we defer. Second.
Any other discussion, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And I think the big issue for you to be looking at is the number that keeps jumping out is the 17.24 units per acre, which is higher than our R6 zoning and higher than the overlay, looking at some additional parking for guest parking. I would assume a dog park or playground amenity package could be worked out. I don't think that's as big an issue as those two things are, just speaking for myself there, but that's a third.
I'll throw in a couple mindsets I had, you know, for the past two times, we've had commercial product brought to us and felt very favorable about that. And so this is a 180 to that?
Yeah.
And so I'm just, just not sure, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, under rezoning request, item number four has been withdrawn.
That's correct.
Moving on to item number five, land solutions, Westover staff comments.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request, 8916 Rocky Fork Amble Road, currently zoned R3, requested to be rezoned to a PRD. Surrounding zoning in Rutherford County is R M. The land use plan will support a medium-density single-family residential development in this area. This proposed PRD is for 148 single-family lots. We had several comments, some of these are tied to CUD, really eight through 12, so the, or I'm sorry, eight through 11, so we really can't really address those, those are really more of a CUD comment. I'll go through the others, so. Comment number four is with regards to the amenities. They, they have, did revise that and did show some additional options on those amenities. I think what we had to, I think they're looking at the playground as one of their options, and the playground is actually required with two additional options, so I think they will, they do need to kind of correct that part of it. Number five is with regards to the, and they've agreed to this, regarding the sewer coming offsite at Bankside, through easements from their property on to the east, they are working with that adjacent property owner to obtain that easement, and then no sewer lift station will be allowed there, and they have heard that, and they have agreed to that, that's not an issue. Number six is just a standard comment regarding US Postal Service mail delivery, and they just need to show that. And then comment number seven, there was a couple easements shown, and they didn't label those, and they have now done that, the one, the 40-foot easement is a, an overhead kind of a power and AT&amp;T and that type of thing easement, and then the 20-foot easement on the northeast corner is, is the sanitary sewer easement. So they have addressed that comment, so. This is a piece of property that was before you last month, that was, at that time, had 121 single-family lots and 61 townhouses, and it has, was turned down by council, and it has been revised to just 148 single-family lots. So it's still the same general layout, but it is, has been revised in that regard, yeah. And that's all I got.
Essentially, everything is the same that we approved and recommended last time with the removal of the townhomes and the additional, and everything's single-family.
Everything is single-family, right.
Questions, comments?
Kevin, in general, R3, you're, you're looking at about three lots per acre, correct?
That's roughly what it comes out to. You have a 10,000 square foot lot minimum, you usually have about, you, you lose some of your land area for roads and detention ponds and that type of thing, so it usually ends up being three, maybe, maybe a little over three per acre.
Okay, and for here, we've got 47.72?
Right.
Where does that put us?
It's right about three per acre.
Yep. It's all over.
Okay, other questions?
It looks like we maintain some off-premises parking, if I'm?
Yeah, they have, they have parking kind of scattered for guest parking, and they do have two spaces per house in the driveways in addition to the garage spaces. They are 25 feet off the right away, head back off, so they are, there's room in the driveway to park two vehicles.
The single-family structure is very similar to what was presented to us before that we approved?
Yes, yes.
Other questions? Last month, we approved, how many units?
It was 182 total.
And so the request now is 148, with all of them being single-family structures?
That's correct.
Other questions?
Chairman Shelby is not voting or taking any part of the discussion, please?
Yes, sir. Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve with staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number six, under rezoning request, Andrew Steffen, South Lowry Street Lane Property. Staff comments?
Now, this is a rezoning request on Lowry Street in the downtown areas, as everyone here would call it the lane property. It's currently zoned for PCD. It was kind of a retail and office mix, PCD, and several buildings. It was approved probably 12, 14 years ago, something like that. And it also is, is a part of the, in the Lowry Street overlay, and the front portion of the property is in the historic district, just the area roughly as far back as Pinnacle Bank. And they want to rezonate, to keep those two designations, but also rezonate to a PRD. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R2, R5, C2, C3, and C4. And the land use plan will support a downtown development, kind of a mixed-use residential, commercial, office mix in this area. This proposed PRD is for 308 apartments. We had a few comments, several of them have been addressed, so I'll go through those. We did ask them to, regarding the existing sewer line, there is, we're still kind of working through, I think, the best location for that connection for, for the sewer part of that, so we still need to, probably need to keep that, really just modify it to say that, to work with town staff on the sewer, best sewer plan for the property. There is adequate fire flow at this area, but we did ask them to do a fire flow test to confirm all that. They do still need to submit their traffic study. We are comfortable with that coming in if this rezoning is approved with the site plan. Number eight, they have requested a couple of exceptions to the zoning ordinance with regards to, to this PRD request. One, they are, have a proposed parking plan, basically of 534 spaces for the 308 units, which is about 1.73 spaces per unit. They base that on a, a one space per bedroom instead of a number of spaces per unit, and then they also added about 10, and took that number and then added 10%, and that's when they came up with that 534. Our zoning ordinance, as we discussed a little bit ago, and the other project would require two spaces per unit, which would be 616 spaces. They have also a lot, requested an exception regarding the building height, the, in this, the downtown district under the Lowry Street overlay would allow a building height of 40 feet for multifamily structures, and they have requested an exception to allow a height of 42. And they have requested an exception to allow a height of forty-two. Again, number nine kind of is related to, to number, number five there regarding sewer. Number ten, we had asked them to look at a left out, right out, and ingress land at their driveway connection. They have requested to kind of defer that till the, they have completed the traffic study. So they did not make that change and, and we're okay with that coming in as a part of the traffic study.
Well, normally that would be addressed with site plan anyway, wouldn't it?
In most, yeah, certainly most directly too, but we did look at that with the zoning request. Number eleven, they have addressed that, that can be removed, and number twelve can also be removed regarding the, we, we did receive a fire truck turning movement. And everything's okay with that. Again, this is a development, of course, it is in a downtown area, it is at a density, is about sixteen point five-nine. It's, is the density per acre, three hundred and eight units on the eighteen point five-seven. So it is a little bit higher density than what we, we would typically see in an R six or anything like that.
The R six is fourteen?
Fourteen and a half, so it's about thirty-six, thirty-seven units would be, that's two units per acre. Is the, the density higher there.
So how many units?
Well, eighteen and a half, eighteen and a half acres and it's about two units per acre, so it's at thirty-seven units. They are proposing access directly to Lowry Street as well as to Sam Davis Road. Main Street is stubbed into this road, into this property, but they were not looking at utilizing that. Just the two other access points. There is a, a, the town is underway with a fairly major stormwater improvement projects and all, and they are, this project, property is part of that, and they are showing the easements. That we asked them to look at for that in regards to this property, where we would be, we would be constructing those improvements, not them, but they did provide the easements to us. Or showing them being provided as a part of this development. It is a, with regards to other requirements of the Lowry Street overlay with architectural requirements. They are meeting those requirements with, in addition to our normal designer view requirements, there's some additional requirements with regards to a certain minimum percentage of transparency that's provided through the windows. Making sure the building's kind of articulated, so it's not just a flat wall, it's, there's some variety in the, in the building as well, especially those frontage on the Lowry Street. And so those type of things, they are, they are, again, are consistent with designer view as well as the Lowry Street overlay in that regard.
Is this entire tract part of the overlay?
Yes. As far as the, the Lowry Street overlay, not the historic overlay.
Does the historic overlay require any difference with the architecturals than what our design review, which I assume this makes?
Yeah, what they're, what they're proposing would be consistent with anything our historic guidelines would, would require.
Color swatch and all that? Color swatch?
Well, well, I mean, they, they would meet the color requirements.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, yeah, they would meet those, all that. So there's not, would not be an issue with the historic guidelines, as far as staff is concerned anyway. And they would only really affect the front two buildings. They are, as far as the amenity package and all, they are meeting those requirements as well. So, that's what they're required to have. That's all that I have, they are here if you have any questions.
Would you say then our issues are parking, density, very similar to our previous discussion as to how we handle those? And not only as it relates to R six, but also how we're supposed to look at it with the suggested density?
Right, suggested density is-
In the overlay.
Right.
Do we know where that suggested density came from?
I don't remember specifically.
What was it, twelve?
Yeah. I know we had a lot of discussions when we were talking about the, the Lowry Street was planned and, and the, and the overlay zoning part of it as well. I don't remember exactly where twelve came from, other than maybe it was because it was less than what we allow on R six now, I don't know exactly.
Well, I didn't either, so it's just was-
Why, why twelve and not ten or fourteen or thirteen or whatever?
Do we have someone here representing the applicant? Sir, would you please address especially parking and density, which are somewhat related, I'm sure?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Give your name and your address.
Yes, sir, Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith. We also have with us this evening Stephen Hendricks with Wood Partners. Pleasure to be here this evening and present this project to you, and we've really appreciated the opportunity to work with staff. And we know that the downtown area and the Depot District is near and dear to a lot of efforts that the town has been trying to forward. So we feel this is a very important project and we realize we want to meet, meet a high mark and achieve something that will succeed for everybody. Related to the density, there's a few things I want to point out. One, I think Mr. Riggsby had pointed out is, this really is a downtown, it's a central business district property. We were advocating the idea that if density deserves to be anywhere, it's here. We really believe this could have a lot of good potential for the Depot District and the downtown as far as bringing rooftops and residents to that area. So we think that density is well-served to actually achieve some goals that the town would hope to see in that area. The other thing I'd like to mention is that relative to density, this particular developer is really accustomed to do a high level of amenities, a high level of quality. They've done several projects throughout the mid-south. One of the partners has been very active in the, some of the Nashville development. And that density allows them to achieve that amenity package and the quality that they would like to present. So that's a, that's an important part of the mix that they are trying to achieve with that density. I also know that as we've talked about, the Depot District and the downtown area, I'm a consultant, that's been part of some of those conversations. A lot of the discussion was the heart of, when a developer gets here and they're ready to invest in the downtown, the idea is to give them some flexibility to meet design. That's going to achieve all the goals that both the town and the developer want. And so as I said, I'm pretty excited about that opportunity being here, that we can actually present something that is real, something that's a major investment into Lowry Street and into the central business district. So for all those reasons, we're advocating that that density is, we think, a well-deserved one. As it relates to parking, there again, this developer is, is very achieved developer, they've done a lot of projects throughout the mid-south. And what they use is that formula of one space per bedroom and then plus the ten percent for guest parking. And this particular project has more than half of the, the units that will be one-bedroom units, those, that's about fifty-three percent. So there are several projects that I can highlight. Brighton Park, which is in Somerville, South Carolina, actually has one point seven per unit that was completed, opened in twenty eighteen. Belmont in Atlanta, Georgia was completed in twenty fifteen, so that's been ninety-five percent occupied now for several years. They actually have a one point five-four per unit ratio, and that's a one point oh-one per bedroom.
What's the population that those, of those towns where those apartment complexes are?
I'm sorry, the population relative to demographics or to actual number of people?
Is it in a downtown area or more of a suburb type?
Right, so that particular project is in Atlanta.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And the other one, the Summers, that's in Somerville, South Carolina.
Would you happen to note that's more of a suburban or urban?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, we've put this product, we call this a sort of a transitional product. Our density usually runs sixty to a hundred acres, you know, to an acre. So this is kind of a suburban, urban type of project. The Belmont project was actually in the town of Smyrna, Georgia, believe it or not, there's another Smyrna out there. And it is a very much, I don't know if you're familiar with the Braves, Atlanta Braves stadium is in that area. So it's a very concentrated CBD type of district, and we were less than probably two miles from that area, so. And that was a one point five-three ratio. So bedroom count really drives a lot of this, that's part of the challenge. If you had a lot of twos and threes, obviously the parking goes up and that brings your ratio up. So that's what we're trying to work with here, somewhat is a lower, more ones, less twos.
What is your, what's your actual breakdown of the three hundred and eight units?
Right, so we have one hundred and sixty-three one-bedroom, one hundred and thirty-seven two-bedroom, and eight-three bedroom. And that's what's, what's drove the one point seven spaces per unit. And I think the other thing that I want to highlight related to parking, obviously, the developer is not interested in, in having a project fail. And they've looked at this very closely and they've looked at it in other markets and they realize that it's important to have the parking that works. We also would like to reduce, you know, we'd like to have as much green space and as much quality feeling to the project as, as we can. So part of what we've done with this site design is really try to give nice perimeter of, of green and open space and a high amenity package.
I see a lot of the positives that you're pointing out with the density and how it can support or invigorate the downtown area. Have you considered just the culture of a Smyrna versus an urban area where, you know, somebody doesn't even need a car? So we are a drive-in community.
Right.
So I think that's something to be considered when you say a one-bedroom, one car, well, one-bedroom, two people, one-bedroom, two cars, both driving to work different places.
We're certainly willing to consider to look at that issue. But we're, you know, our request is for the one point seven. We feel that part of the dynamics might actually be the Nissan factor too, that there's people working on different shifts. It's not always a typical, you know, need for a parking spot all night. Some people are actually working at night, some at day, may be a factor.
And with Nissan saying that, that's, that's pretty interesting. They have such a great bonus being an employee that it's almost, almost not to the advantage to buy a car when they don't need one. So, there you go, another car in the driveway.
Right. Well, as I said, the parking, the parking is something that we are, we want it to succeed. Obviously, we want, we want the parking to work. We don't want to overpark, we have some room and flexibility in that. We haven't covered the whole site with asphalt and I think the density issue obviously is a lot more important to us and probably not as much flexibility on that. So I think we could, we could look at accommodating the two spaces per unit and I think achieve something that might satisfy everybody. We're willing to look at that with staff.
I think you have to look at visitors too. If you meet the, if you meet the requirements, you're eighty-two short right now, the requirements. And if you have thirty or forty visitors in this development this size, you could, then you're that many more spaces short. Or if you're two bedrooms, you've got, you know, you could have up to three people driving, if you've got a husband, wife, and a child or two children there, you could have an additional car. So even, even with that, it's going to be short.
All these buildings three-story?
Yes, sir, and, and the request for the two additional feet is because we want to, there's a, there's a requirement for a two-foot elevation difference along Lowry Street. And that first floor of the building, we want to have a twelve-foot clear story. Part of that is creating that sense of, you know, more of a, more of a urban-related context along Lowry Street. So we've added additional height to that first floor and then that's created the extra two feet.
All, all buildings have elevators?
I believe so.
That's a question.
No. Okay.
No elevators?
Okay, no elevators?
No elevators.
So there's no commercial on this at all, it's all residential, what you're proposing?
That's correct.
No commercial space for shops or coffee shops or anything like that?
Right, and here again, the developer has had experience with that. They are really good at providing high-quality residential units. They have found when they put small commercial components in, it really struggles. And I think that would, they feel like that would deter the, the best product that they want to create. My belief and hope, obviously, is that this brings that vitality to the central business district and to, and Depot District. That would make a huge difference in providing opportunities for retail and commerce in that area.
Kevin, just to tell you what Mike and staff do, is designed to bring vitality to the downtown area. What would be wrong with putting commercial on the front if that's the whole end goal?
A lot of times the, you have to have the rooftops to drive the commercial.
I'm talking about the two sites in the front?
Yes, sir.
The face lounge.
Right. Here again, in, you know, in areas like the Gulch where this has been tried, it's, that commercial space has always really struggled for the developer and they're-
I heard you, right, this is going to help the vitality of business in the downtown district?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But there's a different, retail and, and commercial are different animals than residential. This, this particular developer is, as I said, very good and understands residential market. And, you know, that, that additional commercial space is, is quite honestly struggled for them and it just kind of deterred.
But you're talking about a live work, commercial space, I'm talking about the commercial retail. I'm, I'm talking about this not being residential on the front.
Right, and that's what they, they have had, that very same scenario in the Gulch, that there's a partner in this, in this development that has done that and that space has just remained vacant, it hasn't. Now, if you look at the Gulch, there's obviously great commerce going on, there's retail going on. So it's not, it's just not the type of space and the type of product that the developer finds to be advantageous for them.
And he thinks it'll be the other businesses in the area?
Yes, sir.
I have a little trouble understanding that dynamic, I guess.
As I said, there's a, there's a different, it's a different market when you have ground floor, commercial underneath an apartment complex than, say, something that's going in next door in the, in the downtown area. So they've, they've done that mix in the past, and it just has been a struggle for them to get that retail to work. They're not retail, they're not retail developers, that's not their, their, their sweet spot and it's not where they are the strongest.
And there may be more questions about that, but while I'm-
Yes, sir.
Asking and I'm thinking, I'll have a couple more.
Right.
The access ingress and egress you have is on Lowry Street and also over on Sam Davis Road, and to my knowledge or to my view, that's it, correct? You got the two, right?
Yes, sir, there's two access points.
So the one on Sam Davis Road and the one on Lowry, I heard somebody mention a left access out of there, did you mention that a while ago, Kevin?
We mentioned that, to look at that, yes.
We're talking about coming out of a complex and cutting across two lanes and a median, right, to turn left out of there. So most of the time, if it were me, I don't know, it's going to be the same if they go down to Sam Davis Road and come out there because there's no light there either.
Right.
So it's a challenge to turn left on Lowry Street. Would you agree?
Yes, it can be challenging to turn left on Lowry.
So I kind of wonder which access point would be more favorable for people who lived in here. They're going to have to, if they're, if they're going left.
Right.
It's either or. Turn to right's a different thing. They can probably do that pretty easily.
Right.
Over on Sam Davis Road, you're, you're emptying out onto a pretty narrow city street there. There's a couple residents in and around that area. Actually, you have one resident that's right up almost against that turn. Tell me how you can remedy the concern of somebody like that, coming and going with traffic. There's a guardrail in front of this person's house now. So from a protection, safety standpoint, I wouldn't blame them for wondering, if we're going to add three hundred and eight units in and out of that access, they may not all use this entrance and access.
Right.
Is there something that can be done there to give that resident peace of mind? It's right on their property. And buffering of that as well. So I see some landscaping in your concepts here.
Certainly. Right, anything adjacent to residential will have to meet all the buffering requirements and we'll certainly do that. So as far as a buffer, I think that's pretty easy.
Right.
We know we need to commit to that.
That would be a problem. I'm, I'm thinking more along the lines of having, you, you got a resident right there by the turn.
Right. So
I think a bigger concern than that is you will not pull out of there without getting hit.
Because of the curb?
No, because of where the home is. The home is practically on the street.
It is. There's a guardrail at the front door.
Yeah, you'd have to pull out in the street to actually look down Sam Davis back towards the school. So it is
So that's some concern I, I think I have that, I don't know if you can answer tonight or not, but
Well, we, as I said, we're, we know that traffic analysis is needed. We're fully committed to doing that. I think there's an advantage in having those two entry points. Obviously, if there's left turn movements needed, it either or will, will accommodate what's needed. I can't answer all the specifics on traffic without us having that next step of the traffic, which we are committing to provide it as we, as we move forward.
I got a couple other questions.
Yes, sir.
Not meaning to put you on the spot. You guys actually do a really good job, so thank you for that. So in the historic district here, and this property's in the historic district, at least the front portion of it is, right, Kevin? It comes along around that roundabout somewhere back in there. From, I struggle with apartments, period. I just do. We've got quite a few of them in town. We have some other areas in town that are already zoned for that, that have yet to come to fruition. And we won't be able to have oversight on those because they're already correctly zoned, right? So we have more coming. And citizens that we hear from, they get a little alarmed by apartment complexes. A lot of them think we have enough. The other side of that is, I, I get the dynamics of why our Lowry Street overlay has been put into place. And the whole idea behind trying to bring life off of Sam Reilly Parkway back over to downtown.
Right.
I get that. And I think from a council perspective, probably most of them do because we've talked long and hard, we've had those workshops with, with everybody involved in trying to find a way to improve Lowry, make it look nicer aesthetically. We've done some work that we can do already. There's more to come. I'm getting to a question. So this being in an overlay that is historic, how can you potentially, or how can the developer potentially, I'm asking you this because that's your, people you work, how can they do maybe something gated with some brick-inlay entrances and things like that to kind of put a nicer appearance in our historic downtown area? Is that something that's discussable with them? Are they open to that? Do you know? And from a safety perspective, let me say this. I know you can't put a gate up by the road, right? I know that. So you'd have to come in back.
Right.
I'm just, it's a question.
Right. So, and it's a very valid question. And I know that the developer has talked with staff and we've talked at large about how the design feels here. And one of the things we immediately looked at was what is in the area that we can identify with? And immediately it was the Depot itself, the Depot building. So a lot of the materials and the style that you see in the architecture, that's where we pulled that from. They do, they would like to make this a gated community. And I think that those gates and those entry monuments could, they're, they're again, could very much, we could try to tie in with that same brick material, the same feeling that you have at the Depot. That's really what we want to reflect. We think that's going to serve well to the market as well. So those kind of details, you know, we're certainly very open to looking at. And as I said, I think that relative to apartments, yes, I know that word always has a certain feeling that comes with it. But this is a developer who is creating a, very much a lifestyle apartment, a high-quality apartment. Something that, you know, they found is proven to tie into more of that downtown feeling. And I think that's why, you know, I, as I said, I, I feel encouraged that this could be a very positive thing in that regard. Yes, it is, they are apartments. But if you look at the rent levels that they're projecting, if you look at the quality of the units, I think we've shown you some interiors. The type of amenity packages are there. This is really trying to bring people to living into that downtown setting that, quite honestly, there's a lot of people who want apartments in that setting. So it's not just another typical suburban, you know, apartment complex. Hope I answered your questions.
You did. And I'm, I'm finished now.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, will Lowry Street require a cut from T-Dot for that to go in?
They'll have to get, they'll have to have a permit from T-Dot.
Okay. And then getting back to the Lowry Street overlay and what we're going to be doing as far as hardscapes, sidewalks, whatnot. Is there a walkability factor that will support this so that we get people into the Depot district or, you know, up and down Lowry?
Certainly, there is a couple of projects that the town is, is committed to. One, we, we really hoped we were going to be under construction this summer. We haven't, we weren't successful in getting through the T-Dot process to make it, but, which would be kind of that first phase of that, which is, there would be multiple phases, which would be basically from Jackson down to Sam Davis, kind of a, some streetscaping and sidewalk improvements and those type of things. Which would increase certainly the walkability portion of the, of that whole area, which would be north and, and west of this site. That would be a, again, including a median, creation of the median there at Washington there. In addition to that, a couple of things. One, T-Dot is actually working through some issues with, with the railroad and as far as the pedestrian crossing at the railroad, better to where you can actually cross it on a wheelchair and that sort of thing if you had to, which would kind of help better connect the two sides of railroad together. The town purchased a piece of property across the street and we're going, looking at a park and a pocket park in that area, which would have some sidewalk and, and walkways and all in that as well. So I think there are some projects and the, this development schedule they submitted is kind of a, kind of twenty-twenty-one timeframe, I believe.
Right, actually
At least when they would be closed, when they would be completion of these units.
Correct.
So, and then hopefully, that two-year timeframe, some of those projects will be completed too. So that when these actually become occupied, they would be coming right online at the same time or, or after we complete those other projects. So certainly the walkability, certainly they have sidewalks throughout this project and, and would be connecting to those sidewalks on Lowry as well as on Sam Davis. And to Sam Davis, rather, the sidewalk's not there on Sam Davis now. So certainly there is the walkability factor of this, anything, any, the, the density or smaller or whatever, anything that happens here, that connection to the downtown in a walkable way is certainly something that would be done, so.
Just a comment and more of an observation. I know of, and I can't think of the name of the apartment complex behind Lowe's. But when that was brought in, there was a commercial component of that. And what is that, four years now?
Maybe, maybe a lot more than that. It's been a while.
And it's still a vacant lot. And then I know Lennox worked really hard on that front section of townhomes where they had office or retail or whatever space on the bottom and, and town condos or townhomes above. And I think the last time I went through there, the only thing that's there currently is a sales office. So I, I think what you're saying, I mean, I can support it with examples in the community. And I guess where I come from, or, you know, kind of look at it from this perspective, will it help with growth in the downtown or revitalization of the downtown area so that maybe other buildings and whatnot develop? Do we put the traffic down there that does that? And if so, I might be okay with a little more density. I think, though, parking is an issue. And I don't want us to get to in a situation where we have the density here, but we can't park everybody. And I think from our perspective, we, we've done a really good job as a town to look at these situations and calculate the number of, of parking spaces that we need per unit for these build-outs.
Kevin, I have a question. Just, I'm being hypothetical, I guess, but if it's not this, this is what, eighteen, seventeen, eighteen acres, right?
Eighteen and a half.
Yeah. If it's not this, at some point, something's coming here. We wouldn't know what that is today, but something would. Would you say that the two points of ingress and egress for whatever might come in here would sort of match up to what we're seeing on here anyway? Is that the best two places?
I mean, probably, I mean, you do have Main Street again, but you, even there, you're driving traffic down a two-lane city street to Maple Street, which is also a two-lane city street. And you're coming, still coming back to Sam Davis if they want to get back to Lowry Street. That's really the only option. The two that are showing are the only option other than Main Street.
Who's out of that rear out on Sam Davis and move it? Because if you went down there and stood on that property and you're in a car trying to look out, you're, you're not, there's a, there is a home right there underneath those trees on the corner.
Right. I mean, yeah, you could shift, you might could shift it down. Again, hopefully that traffic, that traffic study would kind of inform some of that about the best location in there. But that's, that's the road fronters they have, that and Lowry's. That's, that's what they have to work with, other, again, other than utilizing Main Street.
I certainly prefer the Sam Davis than to the Main Street. I see a lot of issues trying to send Yeah, what I think would happen is nobody uses it, and it backs up, throws more here. Have a question on
Yes, sir.
Your three-story buildings. Which one of these would be a typical, building three? Would that be a three-story building?
Right. If you look at
All right. And my question is, okay, it's a three-story building. It's, it's only served by stairwells, right? It's no, no elevators, I think you said, right? How many access from the parking lot into the building? How many units are on each floor? Typical?
I don't know that, I don't know that off the top of my head. I do know, we can find that out. I do know that all the ground floor units on the front two buildings are actually accessed, there's a front door that faces Lowry Street. So those are directly accessible from ground level. That's not necessarily just through the breezeway.
Okay. What about the, all right, not those, what, what about the other units? Are they, do they have outside, what has that outside access? What's access from hallways?
Yeah, typically what we do, this is an interior corridor. You may be familiar with traditional breezeway apartments where it just has four units. This has an interior corridor, so you're serving that. The building gets a little larger. These typically will average, I'd say the larger buildings probably about forty-eight units, somewhere in that range. So if you're dividing out, maybe sixteen, you know, roughly.
Sixteen per floor.
Correct. And then we do fire egress and, you know, we check that and add the stair towers.
And how many access points? One, two, one on each end, but
You're going to have, facing the parking area and then like Kevin says, in the front buildings, out to the street, every unit on the front side. These are double-loaded corridors. So you've got a unit as you're walking down the corridor, like a hotel, basically. It's very similar. This is more of a, you know, I would call this more of a hotel-type of feel as far as the interior corridor layout. So very similar. You have, you know, egress points to the parking lot. Usually there's one coming out on the roadside. And the only exception would be the front buildings because we've created for the historical district and the walkability of the Lowry overlay, we've created extra access points. But that's not typical. Usually the ground floor units have to go to the corridor and out the breezeway, just like everyone else.
And your normal units, they're three-stories, hallway access, do not have elevators?
No. Until we go to four, five-story, that's usually the code. If four-story triggers the elevators for us, and that's when we make the transition. And some of these, the smaller buildings are carriage buildings, so they're tucked under garages with two units on top. So it's a two-story. So we tried to mix a little bit of variety into the site. So you've got a walkable, those have their own private stairs that come down to a garage.
Well, that was, that was my question. I was looking through the elevations and I noticed that some of them showed garages. Are those calculated in the overall parking?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Can I have two, three little questions? Am I right that the brown rectangles are probably covered parking?
Those are the, those are the carriage houses that they, what they're calling the carriage houses, which are the garage on the bottom floor and the unit above them.
So those are apartments too?
Those, yes.
Correct.
And does it have a centralized mail drop or is it per apartment?
Right. Per the, right. Per the US Postal requirements now, we'll have to have a centralized location. That'd be in building number two.
And then amenities, I saw the pool in the, in the picture in the back looks nice, but is, are there other amenities or have I overlooked them?
We'll have a multi-recreational court. They haven't determined what type of court that is yet, whether it's volleyball or tennis or basketball. But, and then there'll be a dog park as well and a fair amount of open space too that we have been able to preserve.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I, I think I, we hear loud and clear in the parking. We'll, we'll work with you on that. And make sure that we can make something that the staff and the town is satisfied with.
Two problems.
Sir, sir.
We'll quit beating a dead horse. A gate for this development, I, I could, I think it's going to be so far back off the road, it's not going to matter. That, that, I mean, it, it's going to look pretty, but it's going, typically those gates are front and center kind of out on the road. So a gate to me doesn't do anything. My comment is this, and I'm speaking from a county perspective, this is going to kill the school board. Any development like this now, where, especially where this is located, we just rezoned two-thirds of Smyrna. And we're opening a new school this year out on Rocky Ford. John Coleman, Smyrna Elementary, Smyrna Primary, David Jura, they're all going to still be crowded. And I realize this is the common thing and, and this is kind of what works downtown. And I know we need things like this, but I'm just telling you, it's going to kill us.
What is the target demographic?
Target is definitely the young urban professionals. That's what we, they, you know, with partners has achieved very high success with that demographic. That's what they're looking for. There may be some, there may be some baby boomers retirees too that, you know, we kind of see it at both ends. of see it at both ends of the spectrum. Some people who want to just have more of that urban type of living that's closer, but typically not a high level of families. And we've, we've certainly studied and found that in most cases, the impact on schools from multifamily is, is far less than single family.
And I guess respectfully, Trey, if, if I was looking at this and we had a hundred and sixty-three, three bedrooms and a hundred and thirty-seven, you know, two, which we do, and then, we had eight single, I would have a lot more concern about impact as far as schools go.
I'm gonna tell you when it's built. I'll tell you how many buses are coming.
Well.
I'm just, I'm not against it. I'm not against it.
Wait a minute, hold on just a second. I really would prefer that we just stop the conversation concerning schools because it's really not part of our decision-making process. There's not a thing that, that's, that is not what we are here to do. And I think we need to discuss the issues that we have control over, and I would appreciate if that's what we concentrated on. So, excuse me, but that's where we are. Other questions or comments? What's the wishes of the commission? May I make a suggestion, even though I can't make a motion?
Right.
Oh, we all know that the Lowry Street overlay has been an emphasis of, of the council for quite a while now. Part of this certainly fits that, I think, very closely. There are some issues with the guidelines that we've been given concerning the Lowry Street overlay. This has to go to council for two readings, whether we make a recommendation or not, but I think we recommend it to council for them to decide the exceptions that they do or do not want to make. And that would also give us a lot of guidance in the future as to how we evaluate projects coming here, since it's, you know, we've had two tonight where similar instances have come up that really don't fit the guidance that we've been given by council, by the city council. So, my recommendation is that we send it to them and that will give us some feedback as to how they want us to look at these projects in the future. Personal opinion there.
I'm sitting here with the very same mindset because I think regardless of how we land tonight, if it does go to council, it's gonna go through a lot, a lot more laundry. And so, I'm really, really divided and split on this one. I don't mind telling anybody, it's, it's hard for me to even think about putting apartments downtown, but then, it's also hard for me to think about the work we've done to try to bring life to Lowry Street. And we've done a lot, and we've got a lot more coming, so I'm stuck there. It's like.
I have a question of our council. Usually, we either recommend approval or we recommend, that we recommend it not be approved. Can we send it to council without a recommendation?
I think your task is, is to send it one way or the other. And the reason I say that is because obviously if it gets to council and they change the type of zoning that you looked at, they're gonna have to send it back anyway.
But I didn't know if we could send it to council without a recommendation, either for approval or to not.
I've not heard of that, and my recommendation would be no, but.
Okay. That's why I asked. Okay.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion. We approve with staff comments. And again, because staff has made a recommendation as far as required parking spaces, they've made a recommendation or they've told us where we're at or where we need to be with the Lowry Street overlay as far as number of units and what's proposed. So, again, with that.
So, are we recommending it with?
With staff comments.
With requiring the six hundred?
Yes.
With, with requiring the six hundred?
Yes.
Oh, what about density, allowing it?
Allowing, allowing it as it is and, and we go from there, council.
Okay. We have. Sure. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Before we second, but moving on, what is our concern on the entry rates at Sam Davis? How are we, how are we moving forward with that?
I think the traffic study.
We'll have a traffic study. That will be addressed at site plan.
Okay.
So, it's not that, we are looking at the concept, but not the actual location. We can address that. We have another shot at that one. At site plan where it would be addressed. We've expressed our concerns, which hopefully they will address prior to we see in a site plan if it gets approved.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew. That's a big one for me too. So, I appreciate you bringing that back up.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we send this to council with a positive recommendation based on staff comments.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Well, okay, roll call.
Mike Allen?
No.
Trey Lee?
No.
Regina Medlin?
Yes.
Andrew Atkins?
Aye, yes.
Councilman Tim Morrell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark Atkins?
Yes.
Chairman Edwin Davenport?
Yes.
We recommend this to council, five, two. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
I might change my mind before it's over with anyway. You need a break? All right, moving on to preliminary plats off the Vista subdivision. Staff comments?
Yeah, this is a preliminary plat, forty-four lots, sixteen point seven-one acres. An R3 zone on Baker Road. This is a, a plat that has, was approved previously, but it, as they did not bring in a final plat within a year, it did, the approval did expire, so they brought it back. It's the same plan that you looked at before. We had a few standard comments we've, have received, the, the, will serve letter from CUD, with three other comments there and then, under standard. And then, we had three comments under staff comments, and all three of those have been addressed with this plat. So, it is, we would recommend it with those three standard comments.
Any discussion, questions?
Did they ever do traffic on this, Kevin? Because I, I know I've got concern about this first entrance exit. It's kind of in that curve and it's kind of, I know the other one's at one mile lane.
Right. Well, I don't know, I can't re-
Are there any turn lanes in?
I don't remember they did a traffic study. I don't think it, it required one. There, they did, I think they did look at the side triangle with regards to that they had adequate site distance at that exit. And I know that was something they did look at, the one you're talking about. There's not, I don't believe there's any proposed turn lanes or anything like that.
Other questions? Have a motion?
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll second Tim's motion.
Yep. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carried. Pardon me. Under site plans, item number two, Ashley Grove Apartments.
We're still on the plat, Mr. Chairman.
I'm skipping, I was trying to get through. Cedar Hills two, is that where I am?
Cedar Hills Phase Three. Yes, sir. Cedar Hills Phase Three, this is off Morton, Morton Road, it's in a PRD. This is forty-three point one acres, eighty-three lots proposed. We had several standard comments, and then, we did have, under staff comments, we had several, those are all construction plan comments that were reviewed from our utilities department as well as from Public Works. We would need to keep those, those are, those are really not as applicable to you all as it is primarily, those are primarily construction plan review comments, but we did send those to them. But it is, it is consistent with the approved PRD as far as all the road layout and everything. And it's just kind of their next phase.
You said it's what we had looked at and approved before, on the PRD?
From a PRD standpoint, yes, sir.
Yes. Any other questions?
Not voting or discussing this one or the following one?
Anything else? Have a motion? I'll move we approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carried. Cedar Hill Phase Four.
Yeah, Cedar Hills Phase Four, this is a preliminary plat off Morton Lane. Cedar Hills PRD is fifty-two point four-eight acres, ninety-six lots proposed. We had five comments under standard comments and then, four under our, I'm sorry, three under the staff comments again, which are primarily some construction plan issues that needed to be addressed. Again, consistent with the approved PRD. I believe this is actually the last section of this development, so.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion? I'll move we approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike, was that you?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carried. Woodpoint Section One.
Yes, this is a preliminary plat. It's in the Woodpoint PRD. It's twenty-one point seven-nine acres, fifty-seven lots. Again, we had five standard comments. We want to keep those under the staff comments. Comments one, three, and four have been addressed. We will still need comments two and five. Will still need to be a part of any approval. Again, this is a Phase One of this, this is the PRD that was east of, east and south of Woodmont, and there was a lot of discussion at the approval with regards to the sewer connection to Woodmont, and that all has been addressed and, and is taken care of. So, it is consistent with the approved PRD.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion? I will move we approve. Do I have a second?
Anybody second if they did not will.
We have a second now.
Okay. I thought I heard somebody.
Oh, I missed it then, excuse me. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carried. Under preliminary plats, number five, Cornerstone Section One.
Yeah, this is the Cornerstone, the PUD that was approved last, the last council meeting. This is the industrial, commercial PUD that was approved at that time. This is kind of the first section of that. It's just one lot, total development, reported of this development is eleven point five acres. Again, we had three standard comments. Comment number one regarding the construction plan, we have received those, we're still gonna, those are under review. Number two, we had asked for a sketch plat. This, it shows in a little more detail all the entire development as far as the road layout, water, sewer plans, so that we can, both the utilities and Public Works Department wanted to see all that so they can be sure everything's, at Phase One, entirety of the development is taken into account and that Phase One is planned with, with the entirety of the development. And so, it's, we did ask for that sketch plat. We have not received that at this time. We did ask for the traffic study as required by the PUD approval. That's, they're aware of that, that's in process. We have not received that yet. The road name was, still need the road names. Number five, the water and sewers, this, as it was discussed when the rezoning came in, water and sewer and natural gas as well are not available here, or not, or either not available or the water is not adequate from a fire flow standpoint. They're well aware of that. That will all be done as a part of the Jefferson Pike Road improvements, which will begin, slated to begin next year. So, any development here, they can certainly begin that development, but they can't really occupy any of those buildings until that upgrade is completed. Again, they're, they're aware of that, but they do want to move forward. So, that was really kind of more for their information, which they're aware of, but just for you and the planning and the developers' information. The access easement to Hickory Grove Cemetery, they've shown that the new access connecting to the existing access, we just, we would like to see that, that existing gravel drive. My understanding, there's not really any formal easement there, it's just, it's there but as far as any type of legally granted easement. And so, we would ask them to show the rest of the easement up to the cemetery from where it's shown to the east there, to the, up to the cemetery, so it's clear that it's there. Number seven's been addressed. Really, eight, nine, and ten are really construction plan comments that still need to be addressed as well, so. So, with those comments, I think.
On the sketch plat? On the, uh, sketch plat, and we're talking about the entire three hundred and seventy, eighty acres, I would say.
Right, well, primarily what we were concerned about was that the southern part of that, where the loop, the entire loop road is proposed and all that, but yeah.
Part of the process when, when we were doing the approval, we somewhat divide, defined certain areas as to what would be the industrial part of the development, what would be a lighter industrial part. I think that's important to be shown on the sketch plat.
Right.
The, the areas that, that we discussed and was agreed upon.
There's a maximum number of acreage for the quarry part of that and all that, you know, and just showing that is, the details that weren't a part of the zoning as far as kind of the water sewer layout, you know, those type of things, is a little more detail, not to the real specific engineering detail, but at least know where those lines are going and that sort of thing.
And on a project of this part, you know, you really don't know where your, where your lots are going to be or the lot size, and I understand that, but I think a general idea of how it lays out would be very helpful, but especially have that defined as to what we had agreed to. I would really want to, to see that on there.
That's a good idea. Accountability. What is the timeframe on the T-Dot project to be completed, Kevin, is it a year, two years out?
Uh, no, it's a little longer than that, it's, it's set to go to, to be bid next August, so we're about a year away from the bidding and then under construction, and they're hopefully within a month or two after that, I guess, and then you're, you're looking at actually, the total project from, from Gills to eight forty is about a three-year project, I'm sure, piece, bits and pieces of it will be completed prior to that. Total, it's a three-year build project.
So are they going to go ahead and try to construct the building and have it sit for two years? You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's-
That'd look kind of odd out there.
It would.
With parking lot in a building with nobody occupying it.
They were required by the, that was kind of the first phase of what they, their development is required to, as the condition of the PUD, uh, to that be under construction before anything else could happen, so.
And it might take them a while to build that structure.
It's, it's a large building.
But I hear you, I mean, I, I wouldn't start it now, yeah.
But they're, that next, the site plan is the next item, which has, you know, we, we're looking at the building too, but, uh-
Can we do the site plan without a final plat?
You can do the site plan, they really can't get a building permit till you have the final plat.
Set. I don't know that I saw that on the comment.
It's the next, well, it's not on the comment, no, but, I mean, you'd have to have a final plat before they can get a building permit.
Well, it was on the one after that, but it wasn't on this one.
Right.
Oh, well, on, well, we're talking about site plan now. Any other discussion on this? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose, motion carried. New business D, Site Plans, Cornerstone.
This is the site plan for that previously discussed, um, preliminary plat, once again, it's Cornerstone Lot One, eight point four nine acres, located nearby the corner of Jefferson Pike, West Jefferson Pike and Interstate eight forty. Proposed building to be approximately sixty-five thousand three hundred and forty-two square feet, uh, property is currently zone PUD, and this is the proposed office building for the site. Previously discussed, this is the first, uh, building of this PUD, which was part of the PUD approval process. Square footage of vehicular use area, ninety-seven thousand one hundred and seventy square feet, which would require landscaping of nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-one square feet. Applicant is proposing for thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. Total parking required of one hundred and sixty-four spaces, applicant is proposing for two hundred and ninety, which would require, uh, seven handicap parking spaces, and applicant is proposing for eight. Landscape plan submitted by the applicant shows variety of street trees and shrubs along the access road, and then trees are also shown throughout the parking lot area and landscaped islands, and shrubs will be placed around the base of the building as well. Architecture elevations show primary material of cement and glass windows to be used for the construction of this office building. Applicant has not provided accurate, uh, descriptive materials for architectural elevations yet, so we don't have any exact detailed view of what this building will look like yet. We have a couple standard comments, many which were, were just discussed regarding the T-Dot road project at West Jefferson Pike, um, as well as utilities. Couple staff comments, one regarding the sketch plat, which we just discussed. Two, verify the building square footage, which applicant is advised will be provided by the architect. Three, the fire flow available at the site is currently two hundred and seventy gallons per minute at twenty PSI, which would then be brought up to, uh, appropriate levels following the completion of the T-Dot project. And then staff comment four, uh, providing detailed architecture, architecture elevations with height and dumpster enclosures, which, once again, applicant, uh, provide information that it would be provided by the applicant, or by the architect, rather. Staff comment five has been addressed regarding the fire truck access. With that, staff would recommend approval with comments.
We do have, we don't have the detailed elevations, we do have the rendering, um, which is here, and we've got some paper copies, if you wanted to see a paper copy as well, they did bring those in right before the meeting started, so, um, but that is what we have received at this time.
No building permit can be issued without final plat?
Right.
Which means that either the roads have to be fit, built and completed or bonded?
Mm-hmm.
Why are we doing this now?
I mean, I can defer to the applicant on that, but I'm, I'm assuming, again, they, they were required by their PUD to have, this was kind of the first thing they have to do, so they can, before they can do anything else in the, in that development, they have to, at least this has to be under construction for, you know.
Well, I understand being under construction.
Right.
But there's a lot that we need, that... Why are we doing it before we look at a final plat?
I mean, you, in theory, I guess you could have a, they're, they're doing a plat, obviously, but you could do a, a building on a three hundred acre piece of property, uh, again, it doesn't, you don't have to have the final plat to do the site plan review, but they, they, it's really, they couldn't do a, they couldn't do the final plat till they had the preliminary plat, so, um, you know, I, I know they're anxious to get started, it's only, you know, I can, again, they can answer that question maybe a little bit better, but I think that's the idea, is they're, they're wanting to get started as, as soon as they can, so, they need to get these approvals before they can then get the additional approvals they have to get for grading permits and all that, um.
Well, if their flow's two hundred and seventy gallons a minute, twenty PSI, is that going to be enough fire flow for?
Oh, it's not, no, it's nowhere near adequate for fire flow.
So if, if it's under construction and you can't occupy it, because the water's not going to be upgraded till the-
Right.
Jefferson Pike's finished, correct?
Right.
So I guess you could put foundations in and say you're under construction.
I mean, you can't, they can't occupy the building till the, till the fire flows there.
Right.
There's going to be a sprinkler building, all those kind of things, there's not adequate pressure there for those sprinkler system, for, especially for a multi-story building. So, yeah, it's, it's going to have to, and from a sewer standpoint as well, you know, you're not going to have sewer there till that project is done, so, or at some point. You got a three-year window, I don't know exactly when all that's, the utilities, maybe they'll be there earlier than the road, I don't know, I can't speak to all that, or this piece of the road or whatever, but, um, you do have, basically your four years is what T-Dot is telling us before the project will actually be completed, at least. I'm sure the utilities will be there before four years from now, but before it will be completed.
Do you all have other questions?
There are architects here, if you all want to speak to them.
Someone representing the applicant? Help me understand the timing of everything, please, sir, and give your name and address.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'm Steve Steele, I live at four oh eight Division here in Smyrna, work with Huddleston Steel Engineering in Murfreesboro. As you know, I work for a very optimistic person on this particular project. He is very optimistic that the road won't be four years in the distance. I think also it's his understanding that the water and sewer improvements won't be delayed until after the project's finished, I'm looking over at our utility director, that I heard somebody mention that the water line wouldn't go in till the road is done. That's not my understanding, but I'm not a part of that project. So that's basically why we're here tonight this quickly, there's a lot of, a lot of work that's got to be done, but we've got to get started somewhere. Most of the time that's lost in a project is lost on the front end, uh, so it's, my clients hope that we could get this ball rolling, and that's what we're trying to do.
When do you anticipate requesting a final plat?
Uh, I would think we come back next month, that's what we would normally do, a preliminary plat and then a final plat the following month. I normally don't submit them both at the same meeting.
Questions?
What, once they're approved, Steve, uh, where they can start construction, doing groundwork, are they planning on going ahead and putting a building up? Because even if for three years out, not the four years out, it's, you know, you'll have, like I said, you'll have a building sitting there.
That is the plan that has been explained to me, yes. You know, there, if, if things really got out of kilter, there, there are, there are, there would be some options, um, sewer, the lack of, uh, city sewer could potentially be overcome with a large-scale septic system. We have excellent soils out on that side, on that farm, uh, that would be a temporary option, if, you know, if, if the building's done and the sewer's not there, but that would have to be approved by council, uh, that's my understanding, I believe that's right, Kevin. Uh, water line, I'm not, again, familiar with what all is going to be done to improve the water out there, but there might be things that could be done to increase the water pressure and volume out there, it's not the whole project that's required to improve pressure and volume at the end point, it may be work, there may be, I, again, I'm not familiar with it, so I couldn't address it, but there might be things that could be done, or some of the work could be going on, and if you hook it up, it improves the pressure as you go along, it's kind of a domino effect, um.
Is there city water out there now, that close?
There is water there, yes.
Does it go all the way at eight forty?
Yes.
Okay.
It does, I, my understanding is it's a small line.
Right.
And that's why we don't have-
Residential line.
It's going to be upgraded as part of the road project, as well as sewer and gas extension.
What about electrical?
You know, generally, electrical is not a problem, Middleton C is able to respond, you know, there's a large concrete plant out on Hickory Grove Road today, so I'm sure there's three pha-, phase power down Hickory Grove Road, so I think that would be available.
It's probably across the eight forty-two at the other development.
Could be, I just don't remember if it goes across, I don't know if it goes across the bridge here or not, I kind of don't think it does, but I, I don't know. Again, it's just optimism and wanting to get the ball rolling is my understanding.
Steve, can I add something?
Sure, sir.
I love optimism, but I really don't want us as a council at some point to have to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to allow a big step system out there. I'm just going to put that out there.
Actually, I didn't say step system.
Well, you know, a soil system, other, an alternative soil.
Alternative system.
Yeah, so just let me throw that out there.
Okay, and, and my client doesn't want to do that, I can tell you that too.
What I don't want to have happen is they get way ahead of the game and then bring us that decision because they want to keep moving, you know, now in a different, in an alternative direction. That's just me speaking, my, my bad.
Uh, again, Ms. Tracy Ford is here, uh, the architect on this project, if you all would like to hear from her about the building, uh, it's, uh, it's not all five stories, my understanding it's some one, three, and five stories, uh, concrete and glass, basically, because our client is in the concrete business. And Tracy's up here now, so.
Please give your name and address.
My name is Tracy Ford, I live in Nashville, eighteen oh five Fotherland Street.
Tell us a little bit about your building.
Well, it's a sixty-five thousand square foot office building, Class A, um, obviously our clients own a concrete company, so they were looking to do something that's innovative, sleek, um, we were the architects of the pinnacle building at Symphony Place downtown, that was one of the reasons why they came to us, um, to look at a design, so, it's pretty simple. Mostly office space, we're looking at doing some, um, community classrooms as well that could be open for the community, um, as well as maybe a small little daycare component, maybe on the footprint for a Mother's Day out or employees, um, and offices. It's five stories along one side, and then it's a one-story bar at the front at the north side, and then it's three stories that kind of sneaks around, so. They're interested in having something that's really expressive, that speaks to the scale of eight forty, um, and really says SRM, we're concrete, and this is a building that couldn't be constructed out of any other material than concrete.
Require overlay, height overlay?
It was, that was part of the PUD approval already, so, included, that was part of their, that was part of the PUD.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you all have questions?
Question, I'll add a comment, you know, one of the things that attracted us to, I guess attracted us to this approval was that right there, and what that will look like-
Mm-hmm.
-at our entryway coming in off of eight forty. If you drew that at home one evening, you did a wonderful job, that really looks nice, so I just want to congratulate you and your architectural team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, we're real, we were, we're really excited to be working with, with this group and with Smyrna, with the city, so, I mean, it's a, it's a first impression building that's really about today, so, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What's the wishes of the commission?
I'll move we approve with staff comments and our concerns, Steve. I'll say.
Do I have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose, I both no. Site plans, item number two, Ashley Grove Apartments.
This is a site plan for Ashley Grove Apartments, they're adding, proposing to add two new additional buildings to the already existing site. This is locate, consists of approximately twelve point oh one acres, located at four one seven Eden Springs Road, uh, east, the property is currently zone R six, proposed uses for two new additional apartment buildings. Properties bounce to the north, east, and west by single-family residential lots and to the south by Eden Springs. Property is bound to the north, east, and west by single-family residential lots and to the south by Eden Springs. Surrounding zoning consists of R2, C2, and C4. As proposed, the site may utilize the existing entrance and exit off of Eden Springs Road. Square footage of vehicular use area, 28,427 square feet, which would require landscaping of 2,842 square feet. Applicant is proposing for 9,222 square feet of landscaping. Total parking required of 325 spaces. There's currently 230 existing spaces. 95 will be proposed, which will total up to 325, which is the required amount. Handicap spacing of four, and they are proposing for four spaces as well. They have updated that number. Landscaping, landscape planned submitted by the applicant shows variety of trees to be planted around the new parking areas and shrubs around the base of the new buildings. Architecture elevations show primary material to be used of fiber cement and secondary material of brick on the first level of the new buildings. Have a couple standard comments, as well as a couple staff comments as well. Most of the staff comments have been addressed. Staff comments one, two, three, and four have all been addressed. Staff comment five regarding the final plat, no building permit will be issued for this until the final plat has been recorded.
That was the comment I was referring to earlier.
Staff comments six, seven, and eight have also been addressed. Staff comment nine is regarding to the material that the applicant's planning on using. They're playing on using a impervious, sorry, pervious pavers at some of these sites, and they have addressed the comment by saying a soil scientist has been sent out to, they've been contacted regarding this and will be in touch with this comment to address our comments, our concerns about this. With that, staff would recommend approval with our comments.
Questions?
Kevin, this development's been there, but are these buildings part of the original design, or are these being added because they had additional space?
It's being added because they had additional space, so this was not part of the original. It was 128 units. They were built 30 or 40 years ago, whatever, however long it was. And so this would just, they had additional land area. They're still within the density requirements of R6 with these additional two buildings.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve with staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second, put it on the floor.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Posed?
No.
Motion carried. Site plans, item number three, Cedar Creek Town Homes.
This is a proposed site plan for Cedar Creek Town Homes, which consists of approximately 10.69 acres. Look at what is currently known as 3012 Rocky Fork Road. The proposed plan is for 87 townhomes, which will be divided into two separate phases, 41 in the first phase and 46 in the second phase. The plan, as noted by the applicant, is to have this site planned submitted be for both of the phases. The property is currently zoned PUD, and the proposed uses for townhomes, surrounding zoning consists of R1, including Rocky Fork Elementary and Middle Schools and PRD of the Sundale subdivision. As proposed, the site may be accessed from Rocky Fork Road and the second phase by Percival Street. Square footage of vehicular use area, 67,350 square feet, which would require landscaping of 6,735 square feet. As proposed, the applicant has noted that the plan is to exceed the required amount, but did not provide an exact amount of square footage. Total parking required of 174 spaces, proposing for 361 spaces, which includes the garage spaces that they're proposing for the site. Handicap is NA, and they're proposing for four spaces. Landscape plan submitted by the applicant shows street trees and shrubs surrounding the perimeter of the lot and the parking areas. Architecture elevations show primary material to be used of fiber cement and secondary material of brick or cultured stone at the base of the new building. Couple standard comments, as well as staff comments. Staff comments one and two have been addressed. Staff comment three regarding showing better details for the amenity area. Staff comment four, parking spaces must be at least nine by 19 foot, nine foot at the narrowest points. Steph had, had a couple concerns about the parking areas and the cul-de-sac areas. Staff comment five, show street names and submit 911 approval for these road names. And staff comment six about providing fire hydrants within 500 feet of all units. We had a couple concerns if fire hydrants be able to reach the entrance off of Rocky Fork Road. With that, staff recommend approval with comments.
You questioned the parking spaces. If they lose some, then does it meet what's been proposed? I mean, what are the questions there?
As far as the width is concerned?
Yeah, the-
I mean, they, they just need to expand the width. The nature of the cul-de-sac creates a parking spot that's, doesn't meet our required width requirement of nine feet, just makes it a little bit narrower, so they just need to expand it out a little bit more.
Does it appear they can correct it without losing any space?
It appears that way they could, yes. They would still be meeting the requirement if they had to remove parking spaces as well.
Yeah, but what we approved was a defined number, I think, that-
Yeah, they've got room to widen it out a little bit, so.
You don't really see an issue with it. Just wanted to fix it. What about the fire hydrant part of it?
Just need to add another fire hydrant within 500 feet of all points of the buildings.
I think it was primarily that what they've got labeled as V Street, I think was the, where it gets closer to the Rocky Fork Code. I think there was a concern. I may be speaking at the wrong spot, but I think that's what the fire department had said, so.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, it came through several times for rezoning, so this is, this is consistent with what was approved as part of-
These kinda back up to the hillside that we're, or set a different project.
This, this backs up to the, to the school site, well, to the road that goes into the Rocky Fork Middle and Elementary School.
Yeah, we have a look at this one a lot.
Yeah, we massaged it rather deeply, I think.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Yeah, motion to approve with staff comment.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Posed? Motion carried. Home Depot subdivision lots five and six.
This is a site plan that has expired and applicant has been, is resubmitting it. This is only for lot five, which consists of approximately 1.79 acres located at 851 Isabella Lane. This is for the storage unit of this development. The other lot was proposed for retail, but this is only for the storage unit portion of it. Property is currently zoned PUD. The property is bound to the north and east by Home Depot, to the south by vacant tract of land, and to the west by Isabella Lane. Surrounding zoning consists of PUD and C2. As proposed, the site may be accessed from Isabella Lane. Vehicular use area, they're proposing for 29,666 square feet, which require landscaping of 2,966 square feet. Applicant is proposing for 16,857 square feet, so far exceeding the required amount. Required parking spaces is 12, and they are proposing for 13 at this site. And ha- handicap spaces required of one, they're proposing for two. Landscape plan submitted by the applicant shows street trees and shrubs lining Isabella Lane and a variety of trees and shrubs planted throughout the development and at the base of the building. Architecture elevations show self-storage building to be built primarily of fiber cement siding and brick. And then, couple standard comments. Staff, standard comment two has been addressed, and then all of the staff comments as well have been addressed by the applicant, and staff recommend approval.
Have a question on the original site plan approval. Did that approve both buildings, and then it was separated after the fact, after the site plan was approved?
No, it was, it was always kinda proposed to be on two separate lots, and the original plat had, the original site plan was for both buildings, but they were on separate lots.
Cause I, cause I was thinking when we approved the PUD, it involved retail and this structure.
Yeah, and it is, I mean, they still have, the, the PUD approval still has that retail structure as a part of it.
But it all doesn't have to be built at the same time.
Right, they're, they're constructing the access from Isabella Lane, which would be used by that retail building, but, and then, but they're just building just the commercials, I'm sorry, the storage building is all they're proposing to be built at this time. I think this, I think the ownership of the property has changed, and so I think it's, this developer's only building the, the storage site with a future developer to build that retail site. And the zoning's still in place, so they'll just have to bring back a site plan in the future so they can build that, because it's expired as well.
So they're just, they're just wanting the building right now?
All they're building is the storage building, right, at this time. And, and then the parking and everything that goes with that storage building. And again, and they're building the access which was going to be shared between the two buildings. So that access would be there in the future, for future development on the other lot.
Other questions? Have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Posed? I pass. Item number five, Rock Springs Plaza. Staff comments?
Similar situation as last one. The site plan for this project has expired, and they're coming back through for requesting approval again on this project. Proposed site plan for Rock Springs Plaza, Phase Two, consists of 5.10 acres located at Rock Springs Road and Jim Parker Drive. Property is currently zoned C2, and the proposed uses for convenience, commercial, retail, and restaurant. Property is bound to the north by Commercial Building, to the east by Jim Parker Drive, to the south by Rock Springs Road, and to the west by residential houses. Surrounding zoning consists of C2, C4, and R4. As proposed, the site may be accessed from Jim Parker Drive and Rock Springs Road. Proposing for 43,365 square feet of vehicular use area, required landscaping of 4,336 square feet. Applicant is proposing for 12,600 square feet of landscaping. Total parking required of 205 spaces, and they have reached that 205 spaces. They have addressed our comment to add one space to the site, so they are meeting the required amount of 205 spaces. Handicap parking of six, and in Phase Two alone, they're proposing for eight spaces. Landscape planned submitted by the applicant shows shrubs and bushes around the base of buildings. A variety of street trees and shrubs are also proposed to be lining the property. Architecture elevations for the convenience store show primary material of brick and stone to be used. Elevations on the other two buildings show primary material of brick and ephes with stone accents. Then we had the one standard comment for this was to add one parking space to meet the required minimum amount, and they have done that at the gas station area of this development. And with that, staff recommend approval.
Exactly what was approved before?
Uh, there is one change. They are showing a right-in access on, into, directly into the convenience store site. Before, there was no access directly into that, but it would just be, it would be a right-in only and angled as such.
Oh, off of Jim Parker?
Off of Jim Parker Drive, yes, sir. Would not be access out from that, onto Jim Parker, at that location. They did submit a revised traffic study and, that right-in works there right out, would cause too much conflict there at that location, at that intersection there of Jim Parker and Rock Springs, so.
You don't have any issue with them coming out of the complex and then somebody making a right into there?
No.
That distance?
No. One other thing, I think the convenience store, I believe, was previously an eight-pump store. I think they're going down to six, but, or six, I'm not saying, not six pumps, but six pump islands anyway. It's a little bit smaller.
Other questions? Have a motion?
No, they approve?
Have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Posed? Motion carried. Item number six under site plan, Storage Nation.
This is a request from the applicant at Storage Nation to provide an alternate landscape plan that was previously approved by the Planning Commission. Landscape buffer was required to be planted behind Storage Building Five to serve as a landscape buffer for the adjacent residential zone apartments. Applicant has requested this variation due to the topography and geology of the property. Applicant stated that there is a presence of shallow rock that exists beyond the height of the storage building and the existing opaque wooden fence that acts as a screen between the properties currently. What the adjustment site would still be meaning, the 10% required landscaping amount of vehicular use area. Approval must be granted from the Planning Commission to relocate the landscaping on this site due to the property being zoned a PCD development. And just to recap, the requested amendment is to eliminate landscape buffer on the eastern boundary and to move the landscape buffer on the northern boundary onto the adjacent properties pending those owners' approval, just to provide a little bit more of a buffer between those properties to the north of this site. As, went out to the site, took pictures of it, there's, here they are right there, the existing rock face does roughly meet and match the height of the existing building, and that opaque wooden fence, as they refer to as well, does extend beyond the roofline of the building. So that's where that applicant is coming from. And they did advise me as well that they could plant trees up there, but with the rock up there, they wouldn't survive, so just posing, posing a tough, tough circumstance for them to plant landscaping in that area up there. And applicant is here if you'd like to ask him any questions.
So does this require them to do the buffer on the adjacent property owner if we approve it?
There, there needs to be a buffer of some sort up there. This is their request. They, they want to go up and ask the adjacent owners whether they would like the trees to be moved onto their property just to act as more of a buffer. The applicant can't speak to that more as well, though.
Applicant here. Please come forward, give your name and address, please, sir.
Rich Davis, 1002 Woodmont Boulevard, Nashville, Tennessee.
All right.
And, uh, the, the main thought was just to reallocate the landscape to places where it kind of made more sense. And one of the things that we had discussed early on was the, I think the neighbors to the, to the north might be the most, make the most sense for these trees to be in. So, we kind of had made that proposal that we could put those there, uh, for them. If we took them off the back, put them over there where there's kind of a little more meaning to the, to them, the residents next door, so...
How many?
Had you dialogued with them yet?
Uh, we, we had dialogued with the, uh, with the developer, and he said that's fine. He, he basically said, yeah, that would be fine. I, ultimately, I think the houses now have sold from the developer to an individual homeowner, so we just have to get their, you know, permission to do that if they want us to. Uh, but we have reallocated additional landscaping in other areas in the front and on the, uh, I think the, uh, the south side as well. So I think we meet all the requirements, and we're putting them kind of where they really make the most sense, uh, above and beyond, you know, talking to the neighbors as well, so that was the thought.
How many property owners are involved?
Two, as I understand, yeah.
Yeah, there's two single-family lots.
Two single-family residences, yeah.
If he, I guess I have a... If he can't plant the trees, and you go to those neighbors and they say no...
Well, we have added trees also to the...
I understand that, I'm just saying along this face, i- if he goes and they say we don't want them, do we just kind of leave it up to the neighbors? I mean, looking at the topography, if he plants the trees, they're gonna die.
If he can plant them.
If he, well, he might get a...
That's, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing, yeah, actually trying to plant.
The topography hadn't changed from what was approved. If it was an issue, it could have been addressed at that point in time.
If I may, Al Morales with Simply Self Storage. So when we were actually developing that building, that number five, uh, the, while the topography did not change, what did change was we didn't know that that was all stone and shale rock. Originally, we thought it was gonna be dirt, and so when it was uncovered as we were excavating for our building to sit back in there, there, we realized that it was all stone. So, at the time, we thought it was, it was plantable. When we got into it, it was clear that it was not gonna be able to be put there. So what we're offering is either, the, i- if we can't do it in the neighbors, if, if the neighboring parcels don't want the trees, I mean, we could still, I mean, we bought the trees, so we could still place them in other parts of, of our complex so that we'd meet the requirements in the front, towards the, uh, the Lowe's lot, or towards any other part of the parcel. We don't want to eliminate them, we already paid for them. I just want to relocate them somewhere where they'll survive.
Thank you, sir. Tuitions of the commission.
I guess my, I'll throw one out there, go to the neighbors if they're amicable to do it, plant them on their side, if they're not, distribute them on the rest of the property.
We certainly can agree to that, that, that would be fine.
Is that a motion?
I guess, yes.
That's, that was a question, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, we have any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, I both no. Zoning ordinance amendments.
Yeah, we've got a couple ordinance amendments, uh, both relatively minor.
Can this wait till next time? Are we in a hurry on these? We need them? Are they real simple? Yeah, we need them, go ahead.
I think, well...
I can tell, go ahead.
Yeah, let's just go, if we could, they shouldn't take long. Uh, the first one, basically, it has to do with Article Three, Section 3.100. Uh, basically, uh, it just adds another level. These are regarding, uh, basically different lot sizes allow different sized, uh, detached accessory buildings. And this would just, basically just add in one other level of that. Currently, anything above three acres, you can have fifteen hundred square feet. This would basically, still allow that for three, up to five, or greater than five, you could go up to twenty-four hundred square feet. And then just, there's other, a couple of little cleanup issues in there that we're recommending. But that's essentially all we're changing is adding that additional layer.
What if it's more than five acres?
If it's more than five acres, it's, it's what we're adding up to twenty-four hundred square feet.
Why do we have a restriction if it's more than five acres?
Right now, it's fifteen hundred. And this, this is just for residential accessory buildings. We, if it's an, you know, a barn or something that's truly an agricultural building or something, it's not a restriction. This is really just for detached garages or things of that nature, in residential, not agricultural buildings. So that's, this is something that, um, has been discussed internally, and we wanted to, to bring that to you.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Second one.
Uh, the second one is just a, actually just adding four words to a definition, uh, regarding, uh, as we say, it's Article Two, which is Section 2.020. And this is regarding the definition of alternative financial ser- service institutions. And basically, we just add the words, uh, industrial loan and thrift, which are the, is a type of loan, and type of institution that we didn't want it to add, uh, to that definition. When we did this originally, we didn't realize that was a separate category, but it does fall on, still falls under that. Uh, and basically, what this would add then to the requirement, the distance requirements that we have, uh, from residential zoning as well as other similar institutions in the ordinance. So, that's really all we're doing is adding those four words to the definition.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, mandatory referral.
Yeah, this is, this is a, and we have some, we didn't want to put these underneath everybody's plans because we thought they might get lost. So, we'll have those out. Now, this is a map showing what we're talking about. Uh, the town is, is in, about to embark on, uh, sewer project in the Olive Branch Basin. This would go from kind of the current town limits, north and west, through that basin, uh, that map, which was in your, on your iPad as well, but, uh, does show kind of that general route of where the proposed sewer would be done. Uh, planning commission is required to review these and recommend to the council whether or not it is in keeping with the adopted comprehensive plan of the town. Uh, and staff would certainly recommend that it is in keeping with our comprehensive plan. So we recommend that you would recommend this, uh, to them.
How far along are you, what's the, what's the timeframe on this?
Uh, the design is essentially finished. Uh, this is actually, uh, would be going forward to begin the negotiation, appraisals first, and then negotiations for obtaining the easements, this is what's, uh, would be the next step, and, um... You know, we don't know for sure how long it, I guess it depends on the property owners that we're negotiating with, how long that might take. Uh, certainly, the appraisals will take a little bit of time. So, but certainly, I think... Do you have any actual construction in this year's budget, or is this just easement activity?
Do have some construction there, but we'll see if we get that...
Primarily, this right now is trying to get, within the next year, try to get these easements acquired, appraising acquired, and then construction began at that point. If we had, we had to have some money in this year's budget to begin construction if we're able to, to get those easements in time.
So you kind of think probably a year, but to get everything in place before you can start generally?
Probably.
Hopefully?
Hopefully, that's, yeah. But hopefully, we do have money in this year's budget to start construction if we're lucky enough to make that, but probably a year away.
How does this sewer project and the new annexation laws, how do we make it work for everybody?
Well, um, yeah, I mean, we have to, uh, how we would look at it is if anybody wants to, to develop and tie onto the sewer line, we would, you know, they would look at annexing at that point.
The sewer line does not have to be inside the city limits.
Right.
But with the idea that, okay, the main line is here, anybody that wants to tie into it, then...
They would tie into it and...
You need to request to be annexed.
Right, and that they would develop off of that line, the main line.
Which I assume everybody would, but I just didn't, because of the, the way the law is on annexation this time, there's not necessarily plans to furnish service outside the city limits.
Right.
Okay. What do you need from us?
Just a recommendation that this, this proposed project is in keeping with the town's comprehensive plan. Because that's what the state law requires you all to look at that before council can go out and start acquiring the easements.
Do you all have any questions?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. One question, how much area is this kind of open up?
Whole acreage? A lot.
A lot.
But, but I really don't know, I haven't, I don't know exactly.
But it also provides, uh, remedies for some issues...
Absolutely.
That's already being served...
With the pump stations.
That can come to a, a, a gravity line where we've had to use...
Yeah, we're gonna eliminate potentially several pump stations with this, yeah. Which will certainly help with the long-term maintenance. You know, eliminates a lot of long-term maintenance costs for the town.
Do I have a motion, have a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. August bond.
Yeah, we got several this month. Uh, first one is Buckingham Place, Section One, Phase Two. This one is about ninety-four percent built out. I did talk with the developer, they were, uh, had, if weather permitting, we're going to begin placing the final topping in this area this week. We would, we did recommend, uh, extension of a year. If topping is completed prior to that August sixteenth deadline, if we're able to make that, which is when it comes up again, we may be able to reduce the bond, uh, and go to, to maintenance. So, we're just recommending, this time, just a, one-year extension. Woodcrest Three is kind of in that same situation. Again, we're looking at beginning placing topping this week, kind of make the same recommendation with that. Uh, Smyrna Industrial Park, this is where the, uh, extension of Threet, uh, Industrial, as well as water and sewer extensions there, just now beginning development on that. Did contact the developer, was not able to, he never called me back. Um, we would recommend extension of that at the same amount. The next one is for the landscaping bond, again, just recommend extension on that. They still haven't completed that. And it can, it can never seem to get a hold of them. Smyrna Commons, uh, we have received those as builds, um, which is the only thing we were holding that money for, so we could, uh, and it is at the end of the maintenance period, so we can release that. Uh, Woodmont Four, uh, they did request a six-month extension. This is the end of their maintenance period, but they did request an extension in order for them to complete the punch list. We would, are okay with that extension, but, and if they're, get done prior to that or whatever, we can go ahead and release it. Uh, same for Woodmont Five, same recommendation there. Rookers Bend, Section One, Phase One, uh, was not able to speak with the developer. There are some issues that need to be finished, including the topping as well as some repairs. So we'd recommend an extension there for that. And then Villages, Green Tree, Section One, Phase One and Two. They've got, they're nearing completion there. Um, there's a little bit of repairs, a little bit of topping still to be done. Did talk to the developer, they, they did tell me they would get on it and get everything taken care of. But we did recommend extension of that. Allow that project to be done, to be completed, so, and that's what I've got.
Uh, not voting or taking part in discussion. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Mr. Lee, do you have an announcement?
I don't have anything.
Sunday, one o'clock, ribbon cutting for Rocky Fort Elementary.
Very good.
And if you're really industrious, you can go to Rock Bell after that and do one at four.
Which I assume there are some in this crowd that will be doing that.
I will be at both. Yes, sir.
Very good. Anything else? Don't have anything? Stand your turn.